All right. This is our community's house. We are all guests in it here to serve our community. My name is Mike Littlemayr for the District of North Vancouver, and so the pleasure falls to me to welcome you all here to our public hearing for seven o'clock on October 24th. A public hearing is a quasi judicial setting, so set down to us through provincial legislation and so on. I have a bit of a script that I must follow as I go through the public hearing process, so if you'll bear with me for a couple of minutes, we'll get that started. I will say that even though it looks a little empty in the inner circle here, we do have four members of council participating virtually tonight, myself and councillor Pope, and we're expecting councillor Ma, sorry councillor Ma is joining us virtually as well. So we actually have five members of the council participating virtually, so you have the entire council participating with the public hearing tonight, even though it doesn't look like it in the room. But here, here we go. Here's the script. So this is for the unaddressed district owned lot at Old Dollerton, or sorry, Old Lilwet and Lilwet Roads, and it's the OCP and zoning bylaw amendments. This public hearing is being convened pursuant to section 464 of the Local Government Act and is being held in a hybrid meeting format, meaning there is a combination of in-person and electronic participation by some or all members of the council staff and the public. The chair has established the following rules of order for this hearing. Following the staff presentation, we will go through the established speakers list. At the end of the speakers list, the chair may call for any other speakers not on the speakers list. You will have five minutes to address council for a first time. Begin your remarks to council by stating your name. After everyone who wishes to speak has spoken once, speakers will then be allowed one additional five minute opportunity. Any additional presentations will only be allowed at the discretion of the chair. Please do not repeat information from your previous presentations and ensure your comments remain focused on the bylaws under consideration this evening. If you have provided a written submission, there's no need to read it, as it will have already been seen by the council. You may summarize or briefly reiterate the highlights of your submission, but ensure your comments pertain to the bylaws under consideration at this hearing. All members of the audience are asked to be respectful of one another as diverse opinions are expressed. Council wishes to hear everyone's views in an open and impartial forum. Some important notes about public hearings. Council's here to listen to the public, not to debate the merits of the bylaw. Council may ask clarifying questions. The clerk has a binder containing documents and submissions related to the bylaws which council has received and which you are welcome to review. This is available at the table next to the door and online at dnv.org/agenda. Everyone at the hearing will be provided an opportunity to speak. If necessary, we will continue the hearing on a second night. At the conclusion of the public input, council may request further information from staff, which may or may not require an extension of the hearing, or council may close the hearing, after which council should not receive further new information from the public. Finally, please note that this hearing is being held via Zoom and recorded in accordance with the Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act. I'll now turn to clerk to have the bylaws introduced.
Perfect. Thank you. Through the chair, District of North Vancouver Official Community Plan Bylaw 7900-2011 Amendment Bylaw 8645-2023 Amendment 50. Bylaw 8645 proposes to amend the OCP land use designation of the subject site from commercial residential mixed use level one CRM U1 and parks and open space and natural area POSNA to residential level five RES5. District of North Vancouver Rezoning Bylaw 1431 Bylaw 8646. Bylaw 8646 proposes to amend the district zoning bylaw by rezoning the site from interim industrial I4 to comprehensive development zone 146 CD146. The CD146 zone addresses permitted and accessory uses and conditions of use and zoning provisions such as density setbacks, height, building and site coverage, landscaping and parking, loading and service requirements.
Just before I go to the staff presentation, I was just going to make one brief comment on it. I guess it's a little strange to see a rezoning without a design of the building being forefront in the process. And so I just wanted to comment that when the District of North Vancouver is the applicant on District of North Vancouver property, there may or may not be a building contemplated for the site. But what it does for us is it means that we can go to funding partners and we can say, we intend to seek deep dive social and affordable housing in this, in this space, and we've already put the zoning in place. That tends to put us at the top of the pile in terms of being able to get access to other levels of government's contributions into affordable housing in the community. So I know that people have a lot of questions when there isn't a design of the building. That's why, so that the zoning is in place, so that you can apply for federal and provincial partnerships on these kinds of facilities. So at this time, I'm going to call on Tina.
Mayor Little, sorry, sorry, can I just clarify something? You said you referred to this as deep dive, but that, that's not necessarily.
Whenever District of North Vancouver land is, is there, there, well councillor Murray, we haven't decided what.
Well, okay, that's, that's what I just wanted to point that out though.
Yeah.
Cause there's, there's all sorts of different forms of affordable social housing.
Correct. So when, when we're trying to partner with an agency to, to get the highest form of support, then you need to have these rezoned in advance. Mr. Milburn, opening comments, and then I know we have a staff presentation coming.
Thank you, worship. Ms. Tamsin Guppy has a presentation. Just to note, her presentation will include details on a potential proposal for an application for grant funding with specific affordability levels. So that, that detail could be provided by Ms. Guppy. Appreciate that. Thank you very much. Welcome, Ms. Guppy. We're looking forward to your presentation. You have 15 minutes to do the staff presentation.
And welcome, everybody. So this evening, I wanted to take a few minutes to take us through the proposed bylaws, explain the purpose of the application and speak to the public process and the key questions and comments that have come out from the community. I hope to be done within the 15 minutes, but we'll see. So I think everybody here knows the site, but just as a reminder, this is the parcel of land that is at the southwest corner of Lilwet Road and Old Lilwet Road. It is on district lands and it's just up the hill from the Holiday Inn. As Madam Clerk mentioned, we have an OCP amendment bylaw, bylaw 8645, which proposes to amend the subject site from parks, open space and natural areas and from commercial mixed use level one to a combined area of residential level five. And the purpose is for apartment form housing up to six stories in height and a 1.75 FSR. I have had a lot of questions as to why we chose the 1.75 FSR, and I just note that it was the existing density on the north portion of the site. And it's also the density that is on all of the properties highlighted in yellow on this OCP map. So it is a density that's been used in the community and, and was one option for us. The second bylaw that we're considering this evening is bylaw 8646, which is a rezoning bylaw, and it's proposing to rezone the subject lands, again, the same subject lands from industrial, sorry, interim industrial level four to comprehensive development or CD146. And just as with the OCP amendment, the proposal is for residential apartments up to six stories in height, and again, that 1.75 floor space ratio. And these lands are, this zoning is intended for social and affordable housing. So what is social housing? Cause we've had that question a lot over the last few weeks. So social housing is a term we use because there are so many different types of non-market housing on the housing continuum. It is primarily aimed at being affordable rental housing, where affordable is defined as where a household spends less than 30% of their income. That's their pre-tax income on housing. So to give you a couple of real examples in our community, this one on the upper left is one that many of the residents will be familiar with as you drive by it on your way to the highway, and it's located down in Lynn Creek. And then the one on the right is a Quanis project. It's the phase two, if you will, much be a much later phase of the Quanis project in Lynn Valley. This is Lynn Woods is its name, and it backs on to Kirkstone Park. Who is social housing for? Well, we are aiming this at low to moderate incomes, which means in the District of North Vancouver in $20,23, that's up to $85,000 as your household income. Who is it for? It's also for North Shore residents. These are people who already in our community who need better housing options. And who, and what does that really mean in terms of who they are and the kinds of jobs they have? These are our childcare workers, our EAs at the schools, our home care and healthcare workers, tradespeople's, and of course, some people who have recently retired, but whose incomes are below what makes it affordable to rent in our market situation. Why is social housing needed? I've had that question a lot as well. Well, these are two news, North Shore news articles that highlight what we've been hearing again and again in the news, just how dire our housing situation is. But if you're not out there trying to rent something, if you're like me and were lucky enough to buy in many years ago, then you may be shocked by what rents there are today. So we did include this snippet from our live rent listing for this month, and it shows that one bedroom units are renting from between $2,500 up to $3,500, that a three bedroom is in the order of $5,000. That is just cost prohibitive for many working families. So that's why we're trying to look at how different solutions for helping solve this problem. Where is social housing needed? Well, it's needed in every neighborhood. Where else is social housing being built? So on district lands, we're looking at partnerships on a few different sites. Right now, we've got one under construction just down the hill on Queens in Upper Delbrook, and we have a second one that's under construction. Many of you will have seen it next to Fibs Exchange. And then we have a third site that is rezoned and will probably be going through the design process next year, and that's on Riverside and Maplewood. This is a map that also shows the existing sites across the district and the proposed ones in Mustard, so the existing are blue. And to give you a sense of that, many of you are familiar with these projects. They're things like the Quanis one I mentioned, things like Lion's Manor and Deep Cove. We have a history of working with these nonprofit providers who are providing needed housing in our community. So we know the track record of these types of housing projects. Where else is social housing being built? Well, we're also, and this council has taken an initiative and kind of pushed for this, working with each developer who comes in to see whether developments can also provide some affordable housing units. And these are just three examples where this has been done in the past, on Park Gate, in Lynn Valley, on Boza, and also on the former United, well, still United Church site. So now I want to turn to the public input, and I think it's fair to say we had a pretty robust public process. And that's a really great sign. To me, that's a sign that the community really cares about their neighborhood and wants to make sure that anything that goes forward is done right. So I want to take us through what we've heard, the kind of key topics, and why there are responses to those, not to in any way diminish from what's been said, but to just give that kind of staff perspective on the issues. So first of all, the actual public process itself, we had approximately 1,500 letters mailed out to the immediate area. We had approximately 100 attendees at the in-person public meeting. Forty-seven comment sheets, and by the way, these numbers will be a little bit different if you were looking at the package on Friday, because they've kept coming in. And, and this was me typing at about two in the afternoon, so there's probably a couple added to it since then. So, but it gives you a sense of the order of magnitude. So we've had comment sheets, email chains, phone calls. We also ran the virtual public meeting from October 5th to the 18th. And during that, we had 98 visitors to the meeting page, 116 visitors to the project webpage, 54 visitors to the virtual discussion and 23 comments received. So what do those comments say? Well, about 10 to 15% were absolutely in support, no ifs and buts. And another 10 to 15% were absolutely completely opposed. But a huge majority said, you know, social housing is important, but I have a concern or I have a question or I have a thought. And so I want to kind of dig into those key topics. The first one was transportation, and this is, is common nowadays. We do see congestion on the highway and it affects us all. And by the way, we do have two of our transportation folks here in the audience this evening. Sorry, not in the audience. Am I right? And Steve Carney helped me put these slides together. Benafsha helped do a follow-up study based on the comments we were hearing last week. So we can dig into this a little bit more if we have questions through the evening. But essentially, the, the key thing is that this project is, while it seems new and different, it is a small impact on the existing road system. And the road system can handle this volume. Are there improvements that could be done? Yes. Steve has some great ideas for, for different things that can be tweaked, but we would typically do a more detailed traffic impact assessment at the design stage and then look at exactly how we can do improvements to the timing of the, the signals to get a better flow of traffic through the local intersections. The other thing that is worth noting is that there is capacity on the roads, and one of the reasons we have extra capacity is that over the last few years, students and staff at Cap U have been switching to riding transit in greater numbers, in part because of the U-Pass program. Oh, and the other thing that Steve was mentioning is that we're also going to be expanding the bus service at Cap U in the future to include a rapid bus to Metro Town, which will give even more opportunities for people to leave their car at home. The other point that we heard a lot raised in the transportation set of comments was that there's only one road in and out, and is that a concern? So there's a relatively small population in this neighborhood as compared to some of our other regions in the district or across the lower mainland. And so Lilwet Road can handle that volume. The road network itself has capacity, but that doesn't mean we don't continue to look at ways to improve the local road network. And some of you may remember the Inter River Sub Area Study that was done specifically looking at how we could improve transportation around the school area. And then, of course, we're also looking at how we can continue to support our community through regional improvements. And, and of course, mayor and councillor are involved in this as well as staff, as we look at the mayor's council, work with TransLink, work with the Ministry of Highways and others to extend the rapid bus program, to potentially look at a future Skytrain link to the North Shore, continue to explore highway improvements and other improvements in the area. So the next question that comes up a lot in this neighborhood, as many of you know from visiting the, or of course, from living in the area, is that there's a shortage of on-street parking, because many of the existing developments don't have sufficient onsite parking. And so this was raised as a concern because they don't want added pressure on those needed on-street parking spaces. So any new development would be required to have its own onsite parking, probably in a parcade for both the residents and for visitors. Environment and greenery, and so many people, and you definitely get this sense when you visit this community. As you arrive, there's this lovely lush look to the site, and yes, it was cleared in the past. And trees only started growing on this site in the nineties, well, in fact, since the nineties, but that doesn't mean it's not lovely to look at now. So I am including this image because from down below, these are the most worthwhile trees on the site. And while they're a mixture of redholders and poplars, they're still the tallest ones, and they're right next to the bluff and the most visible ones from the highway and from the Holiday Inn. And it's these ones along the bluff that we have every intention of retaining, because they're next to the steep slope where we wouldn't normally be building. We're hoping to focus any future development, should this rezoning and OCP amendment go forward, at the north end of the site, which allows us to retain vegetation here. We also have a very wide boulevard here and are proposing to widen the boulevard in this side, which would allow more landscaping around the edges of the site to again help maintain that lush appearance, albeit a different lush appearance. And of course, any site as it goes through the detailed design stage would be required to do a landscape plan, and we'd be looking at onsite landscaping that addresses issues like biodiversity and and I don't know, I'm sorry, I've just gone blank, other environmental issues, and I'm also looking at the time, so I have to keep going. Design, I truly believe that design can help us soften the impact of buildings, and I think when you look at the Holiday Inn, it's a building that needs to shout out that it's there so that tourists can find it. Most residential buildings are more subtle in their appearance. We have the ability to step buildings down, have wider setbacks, have landscaping in front of the building. So I think there are ways we can soften the impact with any future proposal, and we would review that at the development permit stage. We've had concerns about the school capacity, and I really want to emphasize, we've been working with the school district for many, many years. But in this neighborhood, we've been specifically working with them for the last 20 years, because this was one of the schools, due to its small size at the time, that was potentially going to close when we had that batch of school closures. And my kid's school was one of the schools that closed, so I remember it quite well. It's why we put, we designated the area for townhouses to encourage families to use that school, and it's been working. We now have quite a strong school enrollment. There is still capacity, but more importantly, this school is number one on the school district's capital planning, plant, capital planning plan, capital funding program for replacement and expansion. We've had lots of questions about infrastructure, and does the infrastructure hold, have the capacity for new developments? And of course, much of the work we do at District Hall and with our partners is, is quiet and discreet and behind the scenes. You don't see me sitting away chatting to my partners in other agencies or the departments, making sure that our utility plans include growth and so on. But I really want to emphasize that the plans we do are done in conjunction with both our other staff teams and our partner agencies to try to make sure that over time, our community continues to function well. I'm just about done. I know I'm down to the last seconds here. So next steps, council is going to consider these two bylaws. If the bylaws move forward, then we would go through an application fund, application process to the BC Housing, Community Housing Fund. And if people want me to dig into that, I do have some slides on that we can get into later. And then the next step would also be if we got funding, a detailed design and development permit process, which has its own public process. And then the last thing I wanted to point out was, because it is our land, the district would be entering into a lease agreement, which also gives us control over particular issues and criteria, should we have concerns along the way. And that's the end of my presentation. Sorry for running over there.
Thank you very much for your presence, presentation, Tams and Guppy. Okay, now we're going to go into the public input portion of this. I will restate from, from the, the important notes we gave at the beginning here, that a public hearing is an opportunity for council to hear your comments and concerns and encouragement, whatever about the particular project. It's, it's not the right form for question and answer. Question and answer is best handled at information meetings, or if you have follow-up questions, you can ask questions directly of the staff going forward. But the public hearing is for us to hear your feedback, upon which the council will be making its decision when the item comes back to second and third reading. At this time, I have a public speakers list form. These are people who had signed up ahead of time. There are 11 names on it. We'll work our way through that list. And then once we've completed that list, don't worry, we're not going anywhere. We'll, we'll come back out to the room, we'll go to the virtual hands, and we'll check and make sure that everybody has an opportunity to share their concerns before we move on with the process. And so we're not in any rush. The first speaker I have is Jordan Hankinson. And Jordan is, is joining us virtually. Jordan, can you hear me?
Yep.
Can you hear me? I can. It'd be great if you spoke into the microphone nice and loud. Would really appreciate that.
I will do that. Great, yeah.
You have five minutes to address the hearing.
Great, thanks. Yeah, the staff presentation, thanks for that. That was great. That addressed all the points that I had been researching on my own, so it's super helpful. Yeah, my name's Jordan. I live on Premier Street. Our families had the benefit of being able to call this wonderful neighborhood home for the past two years. And, you know, I think back to the struggle we had finding housing. You know, one of the only reasons we were able to afford to live here is because I, you know, I think of the relative higher density in Lynnmore and the notably lower cost of housing here versus the rest of North Van. And I think, you know, all of us as residents in this neighborhood have benefited from the foresight of previous councils who enabled this gentle density in the form of townhomes and low-rise apartments that we all live in, and, you know, to me seem consistent with the housing project and rezoning that's being proposed here. So I kind of step back and just think like, who am I at one level as a homeowner in this neighborhood to kind of gatekeep who gets to move into this neighborhood next? Cause it's been, you know, a great experience for our family. And at the open house, you know, I heard a lot of like really negative comments, and I found those very deeply unsettling at a personal level. And, you know, most of the comments seemed to be about the infrastructure being inadequate, where will people park their car, school capacity and loss of views. And I think just, you know, encourage all of us as residents to try and see the big picture for a project like this. And I've done some of my own research, basically the same as these slides that the staff presented, I guess, but, you know, and one by one on the issues, you know, infrastructure. I think the added density in Lynnmore the past few years has reported this incredible network of trails, paths, upgraded on-ramp at Lilwet. And for my house on Premier Street, I can get to work downtown by bike transit or by car in less than 30 minutes. And that's just incredible for a major metro city. And the Ministry of Transportation, from everything I could find, had designed this new interchange to be able to handle much more traffic than it's handling currently. So I just don't think, you know, vehicle infrastructure is a reasonable reason to oppose this. Similarly, the upgraded Fibs Exchange, it's kind of a pain right now, but it's going to be an incredible experience to get residents from this neighborhood to pretty much anywhere you want to go without a car and all of the e-bike paths, like I mentioned. So, and, you know, all this infrastructure is the benefit, and it's a byproduct of the added density in the past few years. The towers in Salem, we wouldn't have all of these extra paths, and it's a virtuous cycle from my perspective of homes, more businesses, more jobs, more infrastructure, higher standard of living for everybody in this neighborhood. The other big point that people raised was around the school. And my view is that the district has been very responsive to the added density in the neighborhood. When we were looking at different neighborhoods to move to from Vancouver, because we couldn't afford it, one of the things I'd been researching was, you know, the school, because the state of the building is pretty rough. And at the time, it was, I think, number nine or 10 on the district's list of facilities that were going to be upgraded. And if you read the report from this year, Lynnmore is now number one, and the plan is to triple the kindergarten capacity, double the capacity of grades one through seven. Our kids go to the school. It's an amazing little school, and I think for us as parents, this is a, you know, really exciting prospect to have a higher capacity, seismically upgraded building, you know, more friends for our kids in the neighborhood. And the, it's been really noticeable the past year, all the new families moving into Salem. It's just an incredible rich diversity of families and kids from various, you know, very varied backgrounds, and that's been very rich for our kids who are in grade two and four. The other big issue I think is the DC Housing has a waitlist of over 29,000 people, 11,000 of which are seniors. And I think the mixed use and income geared component of this project are just totally critical pieces of the housing spectrum that needs to get built. And I think as council, you guys all have a very tough job in front of you. It sounds like we need to build something like 14,000 homes over the next number of years to house, you know, growing population, welcoming more immigrants to Canada, which again, just boosts our standard of living, increases economic growth, increases jobs and opportunities for all of us who already live here. So stepping back, you know, will this housing project potentially obstruct my beautiful, unobstructed view of the utility loaded zone and Blackberry Rambles behind Holiday Inn? Like it will, but that's not more important than building homes for people that need them. And if we don't build homes here, you know, where are we going to build them?
I think your comments, Jordan Hankinson. The next speaker I have is Andrea McQ, followed by Christine Brooks, and I believe Andrea McQ is joining us virtually.
Yes, yes, I am.
Yes, yes, I am.
Uh, welcome. I can hear you clearly. You have five minutes to address the hearing.
Okay, hi. My name is Andrea McQ. I'm, I'm also a resident in Lilouette Road. Uh, I think it's fantastic that there are some affordable housing coming on the market. Um, it's great news to hear that the school is, is increasing capacity. But still, my main concern is about just that one road. You know, possible a hundred and eighty cars extra coming in and out of there daily. Um, that to me is just a, it's a big concern. Um, coming to and from work, it's gonna add a lot of time, a lot of time away from my family. Um, and that's just my main concern is there's a lot of extra traffic on an already busy road. That's, that's the only option to get in and out of that, that area. Um, again, I do support that it's, you know, affordable housing, we definitely need it. But to say that it can handle it, I just don't think there's enough detail there for residents to put our mind at ease to say that that one road can handle all of this extra traffic. Um, again, I would just like to see where we're getting the information that that road can handle it. You know, um, I'm there on the, I go out in the mornings, I come back in the evenings and it's not handling it now. So that's just where my main concern is.
Okay, thank you very much for your comments, uh, and Andrea McQ. Uh, the next speaker I have is Christine Brooks followed by Judith Brooks. And I believe Christine's joining us here in person.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. I live on Premier Street and I have lived in this community for about eight years now. And I can wholeheartedly say we, we love our community there. Um, though I'd like to start by saying I'm not opposed to affordable housing at all. And I understand that the district has a lot of pressures from David Evi to create housing and how badly we need it. I'd just like to say that this community already has supportive housing, it's provincial supportive housing at the end of Premier Street. So I'm not sure if council is aware of that. We do have it there. And I think that um, Ms. Guppy did a great job at showing where ha- ha- uh, supportive housing is spread out in the district. But I did notice there's quite a bit of a gap in that Delbrook Edgemont area. And I was wondering if there's opportunity to maybe spread the love around a little bit. And if I could touch on the transportation side of it, I'm not sure if council is aware that when there's an accident on uh, the Ironworkers Memorial, what happens is that area directly in front of the proposed site becomes a U-turn route. People can't get onto the bridge from the main street, mountain highway exit. And they do an absolute U-turn there and it jams up almost, well, I, I mean, it's jammed up all the time. And I, I wonder about the appropriateness of the site considering this traffic issue. And of course, adding more and more to the North Shore. I, I, again, I know we need it. I understand that. Also too, I worry about the community getting a little bit of construction fatigue. Back when this community fought for Digger Park a number of years ago to have it remain and not become a, a year-round tournament center. Um, Mayor Walton had actually voted against uh, tearing down Digger, Digger Park. Because he felt with all the new changes that were coming in the following years, it was gonna be too much for the community. And um, you know, since then, we've had townhouse development. The most recent one that just completed took down trees on the perimeter of Digger Park Playground. You know, the vegetation we have acts as a barrier to sound. And again, I know the vegetation up near the Holiday Inn, it's only been there for thirty-plus years. But it's, in my mind anyways, it's not really pro, pro-climate action to take a site that's part Posna, which is, you know, I would imagine the district goes to great lengths to protect its natural lands and what they mean to everybody surrounding that. So I just wonder if there's not a better option, if you don't have a site that maybe is already zoned residential, that's more appropriate in an area that doesn't already have supportive housing. I'd just like council to kind of consider that when voting on these two bylaw amendments. And um, yeah, our community is, is really tight and we just wanna see the right thing done and, and to make sure that, you know, the affordable housing love is spread evenly across the district, really. And um, anyways, that's all I really have to say. And, and I, I hope you consider my comments and, and our thoughts and think about this community because it's really lovely. And the people here really care about what, what happens. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments, Christine Brooks, the next. So uh, happy to address this now. So uh, we discourage cheers and jeers and clapping and others. People are welcome in this space to bring forward a diverse group of opinions. And they shouldn't be intimidated to carry those different opinions. I get it. It's great to encourage people who come up and maybe have some nervousness and uh, speaking in public and such. But uh, our preference and our procedures and policies are, are guided around making it uh, an intimidation-free zone, which includes uh, a, a bit of a damper on, on, on outburst-like applause and such. But uh, uh, thank you very much for your comments, Christine Brooks. The next speaker I have is Judith Brooks, joining us virtually.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Clearly. Welcome. You have five minutes to address the hearing.
Thank you. My name is Judith Brooke and I'm a resident in the District of North Vancouver. Thank you to council for having this discussion on social housing on district-owned land. Um, I uh, was viewing the map and the location. It's um, it's a good large area, two-point-four acres. I believe the existing community garden is um, the spot on your map called Lilouette Park. Excuse me, and not affected by this development. Public input mentioned a possible sunshadow from new development onto the garden. Um, page forty-four of your report refers to solar orientation and consideration of any shadowing on adjacent areas. So uh, I'm hopeful that would be looked at. I was part of the volunteer groups that built this garden decades ago and many have enjoyed it since. Um, the project proposes a hundred to a hundred and eighty social housing rental units. Um, six stories in height, we hear, with the rent cost at twenty, fifty or thirty percent. And pages sixteen and seventeen with the income levels um, for each category. This would benefit so many people um, who deserve housing and are having a difficult, if not impossible, time finding it. The, the nearby transit options, the elementary school, parks and grocery shopping are all great assets to these uh, units and would be wonderful homes for those who meet the listed mix of incomes. I've read nearby residents' concerns over increased traffic and density and understand that feeling. This was my home for many years prior to moving elsewhere in North Vancouver. I lived in Strata VR ten, we had one hundred units. VR one-twenty-six has many more than that, already a high-density area. The increased traffic is a real consideration. The first speaker referred to biking downtown. I also did this often and it's fantastic being near transportation corridors. Uh, page thirty-five of the report refers to lease agreement. So I believe that these lands remain owned by district and it's a long-term lease. Also, the staff presentation mentioned this, so I think I've got the right idea there. Um, it's great news about potential funding for the community school. It's terrific having a school in the community. And although my uh, my child was too old for that school, it was, it's great for the families. Um, page twenty-one of the report states, no detailed architectural drawings developed so far. Mayor Little commented on this at the outset of the meeting. Um, I would just say if this project proceeds, and I'm not an architect, but I strongly recommend um, an east-west roofline to allow a south-facing maximum roof space for installation of solar panels. My North Van home solar panels uh, have supplied a hundred percent plus of my needs for several years. And uh, this place could use the same sun power. Um, so I uh, I, I am very supportive of, of social housing. I think that um, this, this income mix that you have set up here, it's, it's fantastic. I'm, I'm just really hopeful for getting more people into a home that, you know, they don't have to worry about the, the roof falling in or for, for paying their rent. Um, so thank you to staff for the report and to council for accepting public input.
Great. Thank you very much for your comments, Judith Brooke. Uh, the next speaker I have is Susan James. Susan James is joining us virtually or in person? Susan James? And uh, we don't see a name that reflects that um, in the virtual attendees. So at this point, I'm gonna just uh, mark a pass here and then we'll come back and check in and see if Susan James has joined the meeting at a later time. Next speaker I have is Don Peters, joining us on the phone. I should say uh, uh, to phone participants, uh, to unmute your phone is star six. And uh, at a later point in the meeting, when we're seeking additional comments, so adding people to the speakers list, uh, for a phone participant, it's star nine to raise your hand and get added to the queue. But at this point, it's star six. Uh, Don Peters, can you hear me? It still says you're muted in our system. Can you try star six?
How's that?
Yes, uh, welcome. I can hear you. You have five minutes to address the work, uh, the, the hearing.
Thank you, Your Worship. And good evening, uh, uh, Mayor Little and councilors. My name is Don Peters. I'm a district resident uh, of some forty years net now. And uh, longtime chair of the Community Housing Action Committee. As most of you know, we have been committed to advocating for housing affordability in this district throughout our seventeen years here. And our twenty-seven uh, members are unanimous in our support for this proposal tonight by council. And we, we truly uh, applaud your bringing it forward. We understand that together these bylaws, the D six forty-five, forty-six, forty-seven, and the O C P amendment tonight under consideration uh, is a much-needed response for the district to secure some grant funding and uh, to establish the development uh, of supportive housing with the potential to provide some one hundred to a hundred and eighty social housing rental units desperately needed, we point out. We know the district intends to submit this site to um, the B C Housing's Community Housing Fund as a potential site for social housing uh, to address our needs here uh, in the form of deep subsidy or rent geared to income and affordable market housing. And we, we, we do note, as you do uh, often, that we do have significant housing needs uh, here in the district. And I mean, actually everywhere, uh, as we struggle to find uh, rental homes for growing numbers of residents in our growing housing disaster. We also note that the district successfully secured uh, C H F funding for two other proposals. Uh, the Solal Apartments, the Delbrook Building, both of which are currently under construction. Of uh, interest probably to no one but me is the fact that I and Jack supported both of these. And I currently live right next door to the Delbrook Project. There's also the successful Lynnwood Senior Housing Project, also funded by the Community Housing Fund. Your worship, we note the importance of the location of this site. The Lynnmore Inter River is just about as walkable a neighborhood as one could find in the eastern half of this district. With an elementary school, with classroom space and uh, improvement plans, townhouses and low-rise apartment mix, superstore block away, transit to just about everywhere one could imagine, and Capilano University just up the hill and parkland nearby. It really is a remarkable neighborhood and has enormous potential to, to become even more remarkable. Jack recognizes that there are neighborhood concerns about traffic, but where these days do we not have it? Uh, but we would expect the district would address these concerns uh, as per Ms. Guppy's comments earlier tonight in her remarks. However, we are unmoved by the tired, negative refrain about property values. That there is simply no doubt whatsoever that uh, neighborhood building like this proposal envisions has any negative impact whatsoever. In fact, the very opposite happens to be true. Like many mu- metro municipalities, the des- the district desperately needs supportive housing such as this one. And so Jack urges council to move forward on this uh, uh, this particular project. And we look forward to its progress. Thank you, Your Worship and councilors, and uh, good evening.
Uh, thank you for your comments, Don Peters. The next speaker I have is uh, Rowan Sylvester followed by Barry Fenton. Uh, Rowan Sylvester?
Hello.
Welcome. I can hear you clearly. You have five minutes to address the hearing.
Thank you so much, Mayor Little, and hello, mayor and council. My name is Rowan and I am a resident and homeowner at Edgewater Estates on Premier Street, which is a building complex that neighbors the proposed development. Um, while I am privileged enough to own my own home, that's not an option for any of my other friends in this region. Uh, and for that reason and many, many others, I'm so excited that the district is prioritizing affordable, purpose-built rentals like the one on D N V-owned land that uh, is being discussed today. Um, so first off, I do wanna share my unwavering support for this project. We're living through, as others have alluded to, a pretty horrific housing crisis. And all of us need to be willing to create space in our communities to provide reliable and affordable homes. I think there can sometimes be confusion when talking to my neighbors about what affordable really means. And so I really appreciate what uh, Tamsin was sharing in the presentation. Um, I like to give myself as an example. I'm the executive director of a not-for-profit. And if I wasn't in a relationship and own my own home, I, myself, on a single income, would not be able to afford a basic one-bedroom apartment in this city at thirty percent of my income as a working professional. Um, so if, if you haven't been on the, the housing hunt recently, like I have been so lucky to avoid. Um, that's, that's not the case for people, especially my peers, young adults, young professionals, who are living in constant fear of rent eviction from really sketchy landlords and are really desperate to avoid being thrust into a rental market where it's almost impossible to find a one-bedroom apartment for under two thousand dollars a month. As Tamsin mentioned, you need to be making over eighty-five thousand dollars a year for that to be affordable. And how many university students or retired seniors or, um, or professionals for that matter, actually make that much money? Uh, let alone parents and families with kids who need, you know, two or three-bedroom units and are also carrying costs of childcare and so much more. So while rents have skyrocketed in this incredible housing crisis, um, we're also have seen over the last many decades that a lot of levels of government have stopped building affordable, non-ranked, non-market and purpose-built rentals where folks like students and seniors and families can all live together. And so uh, my hope is that we build communities where uh, all, all people can live and not be worried about being able to also eat and save uh, their money at the same time. And so I also, one of the other things I, that, that really comes to mind, and this is really common about my peers who actually grew up on the North Shore, and maybe this is true for young people in your lives as well. Um, but with the, the current way uh, the prices are going, so many people are having to leave. And what does that turn our neighborhoods into? And I really resonated with what Jordan was saying off the top uh, about how we were the lucky ones who got to move into this incredible, you know, neighborhood of townhouses, low-rise apartments. Um, and I wanna be able to offer that incredible legacy to more people. So I'm not naive. I, I am really excited to see that the city has thought through those questions around transportation infrastructure. I would love to see continued advocacy to TransLink for improvements to our transportation, especially at all hours and all times of year. I think um, we, we struggled uh, when Capilano students aren't going to and from school to uh, actually receive good transportation to this neighborhood. But we do have a lot of incredible assets, as so many of the speakers before me have spoken to. I also think I'm really happy to hear that the street parking has been addressed. That's been a challenge in our neighborhood and eager to see that there is a plan in place for both residential and visitor street parking in this new complex. Um, and uh, also really happy to hear that there's a, an important emphasis being put on creating a community that allows for mixed income and mixed family and unit sizes. So I really appreciate the thought that Tamsin and so many members of staff have put into this plan. It takes into account so many of our community's needs. And I really hope to hear that these bylaw changes go forward and wish the district the best of luck in pursuing funding through B C Housing. Um, and yes, to my neighbors, I recognize that change can be hard. But we really desperately need purpose-built, affordable rentals um, in every single neighborhood in the district. Not just one or another, but every single neighborhood. And so yes, for me, it's a heck yes in my backyard. And I'm really grateful for this opportunity to share that with you all today. Thank you.
I think very much. I thank you very much for your comments, Rowan Sylvester. The next speaker I have is Barry Fenton, followed by Fred Cantor. I believe Barry Fenton is joining us by phone. So again, I'll restate that star six is how you unmute. And I see there is an unmuted call there. Barry, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Good evening.
Welcome. You have five minutes to address the hearing.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor and Council members. My name is Barry Fenton. I'm a long-term District of North Vancouver resident and a member of the Community Housing Action Committee, known as CHAC. CHAC is committed to supporting affordable and accessible housing in the District of North Vancouver and on the North Shore. I am in fully support, fully in support of the amendments to the OCP and providing the zoning bylaw amendments that are proposed tonight. This includes the D C C or cost charge waiver for a future social housing development at Lilowet West, the southwest corner of Old Lilowet and Lilowet Roads. This proposal will allow for the future low-rise multifamily social housing so dearly needed in the district. There is the potential of a hundred to one hundred and eighty of social housing rental units. This rezoning and amendments are required prior to submitting this site to B C Housing's Community Housing Fund, CHF, this fall. As per the staff report, the project would include twenty percent deep subsidy, fifty percent rent geared to income, thirty percent affordable market housing. The CHAC members appreciate the D N V council commitment and support of this strategy to leverage D N V-owned land for supportive housing. D N V has achieved previous success in CHF funding on three previous projects. The only way to provide supportive housing is via CHF funding and D N V support. The CHF bid process is very competitive between the Metro Vancouver communities. This rezoning alliance with the D N V OCP developed in 2011 and the updated action plan in 2021. As a member of CHAC and a D N V resident, I fully support the proposed amendments and zoning changes. D N V needs more supportive housing that is affordable, and council members are encouraged to vote yes to support this proposal. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. Respectfully submitted, Barry Fenton. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Barry Fenton. Next speaker I have is Fred Cantor, followed by Ben Johnson. Welcome, joining us here in person.
Hello.
Welcome. When you're comfortable, you have five minutes to address the hearing.
Okay, thank you. And good evening, everybody, mayor, councillors and the public. This is a very interesting opportunity for me to express my thoughts about this project. I'm gonna basically present it in three points. The first point is, is very interesting. I approve, I've been living here, my name is Fred Cantor, living on Aurora Street. I've been living here on the North Shore for seventeen years. In the neighborhood. And what's happening is I see how interesting the neighborhood is being evolving. I attend a public hearing twelve years ago about the development of the area. Everything southwest of Highway One, Trans-Canada Highway was proposed in those days, the towers, a five-story building, pivot exchange, and everything is happening great. Everything is great. That area southwest of Highway One is great, is doing great. Now, five years later, I attend another public hearing, and there was a redevelopment on Highway One. Excellent, federal government and provincial government are supporting this in a rush, rush timeline. The project is finished. Great, great design, no complaints. Thinking big, thinking bigger for Canada, for North Vancouver, for Vancouver, for British Columbia, thinking up north. Then, now we got this, October twenty-four, and I said, whoa, I better speak for it, because this is a very interesting thing. That corner, that corner is a jewel. That corner is a jewel for North Vancouver. And it's the basically the next hundred years of progress for North Vancouver. But being reviewing this with some experts on the topic, basically, we agreed that we opposed to that change of commercial to full residential. Because this is a commercial corner that need to be evolved in certain way. The second point is, how can it be both? This is a corner that is two minutes walking from two rivers, Seymour River and Lynn Creek. This is a corner that basically is one minute from the highway, ten minutes driving to Seymour, to Cypress, to Grasmont. This is a unique place in North America, a unique tourist destination. This is a place that is five, ten minutes from the ocean Pacific. So we have to approach the Ministry of Tourism and propose and adhere in working depth, what are we gonna do with this corner? Because honestly, from what we think about this, this is the salvation for North Vancouver. I believe in social housing, and I'm happy to support a social housing project, but everything southwest of the Highway One. That's how the things have to happen. The places in Partifol, the places in Maplewood, farm around. But that corner cannot be going that direction, otherwise things gonna change. Now, my last third point is this simple. The future of North Vancouver relies so much in Limmore right now. Limmore used to be very different ten years ago, ten, thirty, forty, sixty years ago. Now it's keeping up at the speed of Blue Ridge or let's keep on Lim Valley. Limmore is doing great. So what's happening here is the next ten, twenty-five years of division of people in North Vancouver, you're gonna evolve with the old Fisherman Trail or with the City Skyway Trails. And that's why we have to support that development with the visionaries, with people that can invest in that two-point-four hectare areas and bring so much revenue for the district of North Vancouver. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments, Fred Cantor. Next speaker I have is Ben Johnson, followed by Cole Keating.
Evening.
Welcome. You have five minutes to address the hearing.
Thank you for the time, taking your time to hear my concerns. My name is Ben Johnson. I'm a resident of the District of North Vancouver. I've lived here for seven years on the North Shore and the city of North Vancouver prior to that. Tonight, the councils, we've seen a very good presentation outlining the proposed nature of this housing project. And much of the discussion around providing affordable housing for individuals who are either lower income or even frankly, quite honestly, middle-income and upper-middle-class families are having such a hard time affording housing in the city of North Vancouver and in the District of North Vancouver that I really applaud the efforts at providing subsidized housing in the region. However, I do have some concerns. As others have mentioned, I feel grateful for having personally benefited from, from affordable housing in the past. But when I look at the nature of the proposal, when I look at the documents that were provided by the district, some of the wording and some of the, the proposal seemed a little bit vague for me. There was this portion of the housing that seemed specifically geared towards very low-income individuals. And my concern is with the potential for that housing to wind up looking very much like single-room occupancy-style housing, which has been introduced in great numbers in other municipalities. On a very personal basis, I have a large number of friends within the city of Vancouver who have seen similar proposed developments occur where S R O-style housing has gone in, and they've seen dramatic increases in property crime in the area. They've seen concerning findings such as things like drug paraphernalia and human waste on their playgrounds and their schools and their sidewalks. And so while I don't get the feel this is the general thrust of, or the, the general purpose of this development, I do share some concerns that may, that may be a component of this development. And within that context, I think that if that were part of the development, there's a lot of increased demand for social services within a municipality that occur when those types of housing developments occur. And I just question the ability of the District of North Vancouver to provide those services at this current time and in this location where that to be included as part of the plan. Now, that may not be part of the development proposal. There may be steps in place that you guys have at council to ensure that either those services are provided or that, that this is not the intended purpose of a portion of this housing project. And so my concern may be misplaced, and so I apologize if that's the case. Just also beyond the professional or the personal, the personal concerns, I, I do frequently, in my professional life, I do frequently work within S R O complexes. And so I do every day at work, see the great demand for social services that occur within these complexes. And, and my encouragement to council would be that if this is a proposal, proposed component of this development, that we either take steps to ensure that social services are being adequately provided or we reconsider the nature of the, the housing, housing proposal itself. That being said, despite my reservations and my concerns, much like other speakers have said, there's a lot of market, I guess, below-market rental units in this area, including one at the end of Premier Street, as someone else has proposed. And along with my friends live in these, in these complexes, and they have affordable housing in a community they love, and they are a vibrant part of this community because of that. So if that's the intended purpose of this housing complex, I can't, I can't voice my support enough for it. I would just encourage you guys to be mindful of the potential negative social consequences, and I appreciate you representing our interests as a, as residents. So, thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments, Ben Johnson. The next speaker I have is Cole Keating, and then I have a virtual participant, Hazen Colbert, with his hand up. It's Cole Keating here, joining us virtually. Welcome. I can hear you clearly. You have five minutes to address the hearing.
Thanks for giving me the opportunity. Basically, I came on tonight because I went to the previous public meeting, and there is a lot more negativity around this development than, than I expected. And I guess personally, I found it a little bit unnerving, so I wanted to come in tonight just to be able to weigh my voice into the pile, as many others have mentioned tonight, to be in favor of this. I think everybody here knows that we very much need housing. I don't think anybody, it seems, is in opposition to that. But affording, affordable housing specifically is what we need more than anything. And I do hope that the rezoning goes ahead, and from the application that I've seen, like I've read the document, the development looks good as far, as far as I know. I personally have come to the conclusion that I'm more than likely not ever gonna own a home. I live right now on Premier Street in a complex called Edgewater Estates, and I've lived here for the last couple of years. I have been renting here, obviously, but the thing that, with the rising cost of living, I don't think that, I think more and more people are not going to be able to afford a home. And I think de-stigmatizing rental and providing more rentals, specifically low income, is something that we need to do just to be able to provide that as a viable option to not owning a home. Because I think that for a lot of people living in North Vancouver, like I, I've had a job the entire time I lived here, and I earn what I would say is a decent living. But still, I, I think that there is no way that I would be able to afford housing. So I definitely welcome the fact that we bring in specifically rental and affordable rental at that. Mostly, the kind of small concerns that I had were actually addressed in the presentation at the start. So thanks for, for that. To me, the traffic isn't an issue. I, I do drive here most of the time. I would love to be able to bus more often, but the bus service does take quite a long time into downtown. So I would definitely encourage council to consider adding more bus services as well as other different types of public transport. And that, as well as active transportation, it's been really great with the development here in the last few years. Like the addition of the parks and also the, the bike lanes and stuff between that. I personally have been using those, and I love to see that. And for me, that is the real solution to solving any traffic issues if we do have them. It's getting cars off the road by getting people into buses, whether that be or a Skytrain, if we can add that here, and of course, on bikes as well. One thing that I didn't hear anybody raise was if there was an environmental study done or would be done when the development is gonna be done. I know it doesn't seem like there's a lot living there at the moment. I think it's mostly like, there's a couple of trees and blackberry bushes, but I think it should be standard. Basically, that anytime redevelopment is done, that we look at what we're potentially losing. But for me, the, the housing does, the need for housing does outweigh that. And I think also bringing diversity into the neighborhood in terms of the type of people that are here is more than welcomed by myself. I know that North Van is becoming more and more expensive, as we saw at the slides at the start. And I think that by making it more, more exclusive and more of a place where you can only live when you're earning north of a hundred thousand dollars a year is a bad thing for everyone. And I think that providing facilities that we can have a full range of all different people in society living together is a really good way to go about it. I think it's beneficial for ourselves and for our kids and for the future here. One thing that I do still have a small concern with is what the plan is in terms of guaranteeing that it stays affordable. I didn't see it directly addressed in the presentation. I know that, I think, my understanding is that it would be leased to North Vancouver. But I do wonder what happens if city NGO, for whatever reason, has to dissolve. What happens at that stage? Does it get taken, can it be taken over by private investment, or is it always guaranteed to stay as affordable housing? So for me, that, that's the main concern. But overall, I would say that I am a resounding yes, and I do hope that the rezoning goes ahead and the future development goes ahead as well. So yeah, thanks for giving me the opportunity to speak.
Thank you very much for your comments, Cole Keating. I have three more on my list here, and then I'm gonna come to the room and I'll, I'll, I'll seek you, if you raise your hand at that time, I'll add you. The next speaker I have is Hazen Colbert, joining us virtually. Mr. Colbert, can you hear me? Mr. Colbert, I can't hear you. You're unmuted in the Zoom system, so it might be your microphone on your headset or something else like that. We may be having some technical difficulty in our connection with Mr. Colbert, but we're just trying to reset his connection here. Mr. Colbert, I see you on the call. Can you hear me? Again, you, you are now muted in the Zoom system. I can see the mute.
I actually.
There you go.
Thank you. Mayor Little, I, Mayor Little and council and all the activities tonight, I, I recognize and I sent some email to all of you tonight. I recognize that these types of projects are required. And I absolutely recognize there are gonna be a lot of negative outcomes. I wanna put that aside because this is the reality. I've been dealing with this for over forty years of my life. And so we're gonna have to, you know, manage those issues. What I am concerned about is that I see the councillor Hanson is involved here. With all due respect to councillor Hanson, and I'm gonna make this clear. This public hearing allows me the right of qualified privilege. And I, I'm deeply concerned that councillor Hanson is involved in a matter in which either or both his son or his daughter might be eligible for this residency in this project. Please, I'm, I'm, Mr. Mayor Little, I am relying on qualified privilege. I wanna, I wanna stress, I don't know the details.
So this is. Yeah, I'm not, sorry, I'm gonna pause your time for a second, Mr. Colbert. So just to be clear, we haven't identified an end-project partner specifically. We proposed one that, that may possibly work, but it is entirely out of the hands of the District of North Vancouver to decide who the qualified applicants are and who might benefit from housing. If we partnered with those agencies in future, it's not at the discretion of the District of North Vancouver in any way, shape or form. So in that, no member of council has influence over who would end up in any social or affordable housing throughout the District of North Vancouver, let alone, let alone this project. So just wanted to be clear about that, but I'm gonna return your time going, and I would appreciate if you could keep your comments on the bylaw before us this evening.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Yeah. So I want to make, I want to make clear, and, and I do in fact regret if I was incorrect. I want to make clear that my worry here, and, and I want to stress, if any member of council or staff want to email me, based on my experience in these matters, I have to tell you, I have deep experience from other jurisdictions in which I've lived. So what I'm, what I am stating here is because this matter is a there is qualified privilege and based on my experience from other jurisdictions, we must be very careful as to who is allowed entry into these facilities. Now, I want to, again, I don't want to name anyone. Okay, please, please, Mayor Little, I hear you. I recognize what you said. I will backtrack to say, I regret if I've named anyone. What I am stating is we must be very careful that these facilities are not do not become the repository for issues that are family related among, let's let's use a very, very general phrase here, okay? Elected officials or staff at any level in the province of B C. Any level, municipal, provincial or federal. Let's just be careful about this. And I want to stress, if you guys want to ask me via email what I know, I'm going to tell you what I know. And probably some of you are going to say, that's probably best we don't actually address this. Again, I stress, I am absolutely in agreement. We got to take care of people that are have been left out, left out of our social social safety net. We Mayor Little and Council, these people have left been left out of our social safety net. In many cases, the family has simply, you know, discarded them. We we have to find a place that even though there's going to be a whole bunch of problems, you got to find a place to take care of them. Okay? I think you guys hear me. We have to find a place to take care of them. Thank you, Mayor Little, and thank you, Castle.
Thank you for your comments, Hazen Colbert. Next speaker I have is Janice R., joining us virtually, followed by Stephen, also joining us virtually, and then I'll return to the room here. Janice R., can you hear me?
Yes, can you hear me?
Clearly, welcome. You have five minutes to address the hearing.
Yeah, I won't keep you long. I'm not opposed to this type of development at all. I'm opposed to, well, we're both opposed to it being here. We have absorbed a lot of development in this area and it's been hard. We have lived here for over thirty years, so we really know this neighborhood. I hope that it the council will read the comments that were submitted by at the hearing or, you know, down at the Holiday Inn there, and I hope they will read what so many of this neighborhood has submitted, because, you know, it wasn't really, I didn't think it was clear at the beginning when she was saying, oh, ten percent are totally for it. Well, how many, what percent was totally against it? Because there were quite a few, almost everybody that was there at that meeting was against it. And we're from this neighborhood, and I just hope that you will hear our voices, hear the voices of the people that are opposed. We have absorbed so much development in this area. And not only right here, but our walks down the river and then the we're losing sunlight with all those towers that are down by Sea Land Park. We love Sea Land Park and the big sky, but there's more. It's just like we have development stress here. And there's a lot of people here that have lived in this neighborhood for a long time and have just gone, oh, okay, another development, you know, whatever. But it's, we're done. We're done. So many of us are done here. This little corner of this this road where people are coming up and we're trying to get out of our little hood. And they're coming up and coming down and and it's just really hard. But there's this nice little buffer at the top of the hill there. And it's a buffer not only for a little bit of cleaner air because of the bridge traffic and that and the sirens that are always going on in this neighborhood. But it's it's a little bit of pleasant pleasantry when the kids are walking to school down that busy road too. That's Little Wet Road, and we just like to keep it. So I can we not find a different place where there's an area where there hasn't been so much development? It's it's very frustrating. So I hope you can consider other places for this and let us have this little green buffer and just leave it that way for us. This, it's so busy right near near the bridge and with and and it's hard even for us to get home. We don't go west after three P M. because we can't get home. So anyway, I just hope you can consider some other places for this. I I'm not against it. It just this this areas. We've observed a lot, so I'll leave it to that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Janice R. The next speaker I have is virtual participant Stephen. Yes, I'm here. Can can you hear me, Stephen?
I can, yes, thank you.
Welcome. You have five minutes to address the hearing.
Thank you very much. I'm glad I could give my opinion here to to everyone. I just want to say that I I think, you know, the idea of of affordable housing is a fantastic idea. I do appreciate the need for it. But the issues I have with this specific proposal is just the capacity at which you want to or the amount of social housing you want to put on that tiny little land seems a little excessive. The the proposal of a hundred to a hundred and fifty units in a community that is a lot of, it's it's a very family family oriented community. I mean, I I live in it. I'm in the heart of it and just to add that sort of capacity in in this neighborhood at that small piece of land seems a little little much. If we were talking about adding thirty to forty units of affordable housing, that seems to fit the community a lot better. The community being mainly townhomes and and it's as as stated earlier, it's primarily families. I mean, the 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 school alone is an example of how how quickly it's been built up with that. So a hundred to a hundred and fifty units. Considering, you know, I I know we're told we have the capacity to take on more traffic, but I'll tell you, it really doesn't feel like that when you're driving it every day. And I do know that parking, street parking is it's a goldmine if you can find it, that's for sure. But that is another concern. And one of the things in the proposal was that parking didn't, the parking rules that are exist currently don't necessarily have to be applied to this proposal. And, you know, i- if something does go there, parking is such an important consideration, it just needs to be considered. So my biggest, the reason I'm most against this proposal is just is just the suggestion of a hundred to a hundred and fifty units. Is a lot, and I appreciate that we need affordable housing. I just wish we weren't trying to jam it all into one area into a community that doesn't really, hasn't had that sort of saturation like that. That's my biggest concern, and I think, you know, the the little details, it's great to think big picture, but for those of us that live here, it's the little details that matter the most. And a lot of people have been talking about construction fatigue in this area. Now, I've only lived here for almost three years and I feel it already. So those that have lived here five, seven years, I can't imagine what this has gone on. And, you know, there is a difference between putting up a small community of places and an actual six-story tower. And I hope council can consider that and maybe we can meet 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 a middle ground situation. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much for your comments, Stephen. Okay, looking to the room here, we've completed the list of people who had signed up in advance. Would anybody else like to speak a first time? Yes, come on up. And then I saw a second hand on the aisle, four rows back and then in front there, so that's fine. Welcome. When you're comfortable, you'll have five minutes to address the hearing. If you could start with your name, that'd be appreciated.
Yeah, thank you. Can you hear me well?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I think it's great to have this public hearing.
Press you to start with your name, just for the record.
Sorry, yeah, sorry, sorry. I'm not used to this. My name is Eric Gomez. I live in Orwell Street, so I'm a resident in the that little area. I think it's great to have the opportunity to basically raise our concerns about the project specific to the location where it's planned to be, because it's the only road for us to go out. I I don't have to drive. I important to work from home, especially after COVID, and maybe it's a situation for some families. But it's not only about like commuting. I think there are many other services that need to be improved in the city, like hospital. So if you're planning to have a hundred eighty units, that how many families or people are going to represent that? And then I've been in the hospital for hours and I've been taking care of a, you know, something. Then I think as somebody else said, it's like a very small residential area. Small townhouses and this corner for such a big proposal, I don't think it's going to be, it's going to fit there. Parking, then transportation, all those things need to be addressed before planning on construction constructing a new site. There's affordable housing on Premier Street. I know there's a force affordable housing or rent units across the Highway One on on the units on the units there and I lived there for seven years. I've seen the changes, new corridor, the new wall. And I've seen like an increase on, you know, vandalism. I actually read into the email the CD for some graffitis on the wall, things like that that didn't happen before. So I don't know if you know, that's going to continue happening. So before planning on affordable housing, I think there are many other things to be tackled. I think it's, you know, it's we need to support of people that can afford a home. But there are many other places in areas where the infrastructure is there. And those places can be, you know, built, not necessarily in that little small corner. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments, Eric Gomez. The next speaker I have is from the fourth row there. Yes, please, welcome.
Good evening.
Welcome.
My name's Elizabeth. I live in the area as well, and I just wanted to address a few issues. So while I applaud the the initiative to look at social housing and affordability across the district. I think unfortunately, that's kind of clouded the issues and I attended the presentation that was at the Holiday Inn. And I was quite disappointed to see that there was very limited information on understanding the impact on the actual site in question. So particular issues would be environmental and I would like to address the comments that were made in the presentation earlier was around greenery and aesthetics. And it was quite disturbing to me to see that that was all that was put forward by council about environmental impact. Environmental impact goes well beyond that in terms of the area, the volume of people that have been proposed to come into the area and also the environmental corridor there. So at living in the area and leaving the area early in the morning, I'm fortunate enough to see a lot of animals that use that area in question as a corridor to to transit between the river and the Capilano University lands, and they use that as a corridor to go through. So I would really like to see an environmental impact study proposed and presented before anything is considered in terms of how that site is used. In terms of transportation, the impact on that area is more going out as well in terms of if the highway is backed up, it's almost impossible to turn out of that area, which goes right up, right up the road. So it's not just entering the area, but it's also leading the area and adding a hundred and eighty homes to that area would would have a massive impact on that as well. The 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 issue of transit that was raised is that fibs is a twenty minute walk from that from that space. So it's not accessible to a lot of people. They'd be relying on transit that's there. It's great that the district is looking at proposals, but these are all long-term plans. And if this was developed, these transit options would not be available immediately. So there would have to be an assumption that the cars from those households would need to be used. And so I would also like to see some proposals around where the cars would enter onto that road. There's been a lot of comments about the fact that that road is the only one in and out, but there's been no discussion or any information given by council about where the exit from that property would be. And therefore, the impact in terms of managing traffic through that area. So having more information, clearer information about those kinds of issues would be really important before any proposal was considered on that area. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. And I believe we have another speaker right here. Welcome.
Well, good evening. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to say a few words. I've been very impressed at all the opinions and the information that has been offered thus far. And I've lived in this area for a considerable length of time. I realize that change has to take place and that there's social needs that need to be addressed. For example, the high-rise buildings that we have down below our area are well below it, which is a kind of a sensible place in my mind to to put a very high-rise building. It allows you to have people find a nice place to live, but not necessarily take over the whole area. There's also increased housing down on Premier Street has been increased. There's a proposal to to build up behind the university as well. So so there really are things on the move. But I have to admit, when I saw this proposal, I I I can't get out of my head. I I keep seeing a giant standing among midgets. Everything is has been so carefully chosen where we are to to try and fit in with the the area. And this is a colossal suggestion in my mind. Six-story buildings, a hundred, a hundred to a hundred and eighty apartments. The road system is is very lacking, as it is. The idea that that all these people can park somewhere that they'll be able to get in and out at times in the morning, for example, and try to come home at night, it's going to be wildly difficult. The we have a community garden which was suggested and is wildly enthusiastically supported by people of all ages. I'm told that a couple of six-story buildings will take care of that rather nicely with the the sunshine and the the access it has to the the sunshine it requires to to allow the plants to grow. Major changes. I'm not a selfish person. I'm not a stupid person. But it seems to me that this is not a good suggestion for the area or for the people in the area at present. Thank you for your time.
At the beginning of your comments, I didn't press you for your name and I should have.
It is. It's Archie McKinnon.
Thank you so much, Archie McKinnon, for your comments.
Thank you.
Okay, would anybody else like to address the hearing for a first time? Okay, uh, would anybody else like to address the hearing for a first time? Welcome.
Thank you guys for this time. My name is Paul Root. I've been a resident of uh Premier Street for the last six years. The uh, I I'm not actually a huge supporter of this project. I think adding one hundred and eighty units in our small community is, it's gonna be, you know, way over capacity. The uh, you know, the bridge is our big problem. We did the big interchange that we did now, unfortunately with that. If I'm coming home from the west side, I'm going through six traffic lights before I was going through two. So with that big interchange, things are actually taking me longer to get home without traffic. We had traffic, it's taking a considerable longer amount of time. Uh, as it stands right now, I work as a first responder in the city of Vancouver. I spent a considerable amount of time in the single residence, argument see a whole like units as well as uh social housing. What I, what I see firsthand is the level of crime, drug abuse and stuff like that is oh unbelievable. I uh, I'm a, you know, I'm a father. I have two children. I don't want them walking past all the things that I see on a regular basis. I'm not saying that that's gonna be the only people that's gonna be in this house. And I know this, the council is pushing to put lots of families in there. However, in our current townhouse complex, we have somebody that's currently dealing drugs on one of our corners. We have another resident who is regularly feeding animals. Both of them have been brought up with the district and the district has not been able to manage those two isolated issues, much less adding potential one hundred and eighty more issues in there. So I I have little confidence in the, you know, the district to be able to manage any problems that may actually arise in this unit, like this building complex. I know they're talking about like a lease agreement, but I've seen this before in the city of Vancouver when the city has basically said these, these same remarks, and it hasn't worked. They're trying to exercise authority, which, you know, isn't well received. And unfortunately, my experience, seeing a lot of these places, they turned into basically slumlord type hotels where it's, it's atrocious. I'm seeing children eat moldy food and all this other stuff, like I don't want this in my backyard. The uh. You know, and we talk about, you know, things might not affecting the market value of a home. But when we talk, you know, as it sounds right now, the level of crime in our townhouse complex is on the rise. Uh, you know, clearly the the park, local police department, you know, doesn't have the capacity to manage the problems as they are. Adding another hundred units is just, it's not achievable for them to manage. You know, much less because they can't manage the problems that they have right now, despite, you know, us basically regular, making regular calls. It's gone to the point that we've actually put a security camera up in our carport because it's becoming so prevalent. The uh, you know, and we talked, it's, I understand it's expensive to live in North Van. You know, I work minimum forty eight hours a week, often upwards of ninety six hours a week to provide for my family. So we can sit here and we can live in a beautiful place. And I I really don't want that taken away from, you know, my wife, my kids, but you know, my dog. Because I I work my hands to the bone to be here. And it's not really fair to have that all taken away from me, you know, when I'm, I'm working as hard as I can to provide a good life for my family. So, thank you.
Take your comments, Paul, and thank you for your service. I believe I have a virtual speaker, Corey Cost, wishing to address the hearing for a first time. Uh, Dr. Cost, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you, your worship. I hope you can hear me well.
Uh, clearly welcome. You have five minutes to address the hearing.
Thank you. Well, as usually I'm a, I live in Edgemont Village, very privileged area. I feel it's a great area to live. I've lived there for almost fifty years. But it wasn't easy going getting into that area at the time. Interest rates were really terrifically high, much higher than they are today. However, um, I believe that the price of houses have reached a point where affordability truly is much worse than it was in my day. And that's something that has to be dealt with. And this proposal ties to uh bring some compassion to our most needed, needed residents. Um, I want to point out that this um that the O C P said there would be approximately ten thousand uh new jobs. So we'd be by twenty thirty have thirty six thousand jobs. But I don't see any of that uh in recent developments proposed. Unless, of course, you count that these people could all have home occupations and all have independent jobs in each of these hundred and eighty or so units. The land that's specified there oddly is a industrial land. Uh, which has um the past been something that's sacrosanct, uh shouldn't be changed from industrial to non-industrial. But when I looked closer at I four, which is not specified anywhere in the reports. I four is a particularly nasty zone. It's an interim industrial zone, principally uses are mining purposes, disposal of garbage. So it's obviously a garbage dump in the past, I guess, and soil screening. So I can see why in the past, uh, not much grew there until uh it was probably seeded or enhanced to grow something in that area. But it's, council should be aware, it was an I four zone and what its purpose was in the past. And how it adheres to council policies into the future. As for park space, I don't see enough monies going into the uh park space to uh compensate for, let's say, a hundred and eighty units, some three hundred people. Uh, I did, I did the math and nowhere near does the D C Cs or the C A Cs compensate for the needed park space that you are now cannibalizing from the existing park space. So um, I have no reason to be negative about this proposal. I think it's one that fits in my compassionate list. Uh, but I think you should really listen to the locals and the traffic problems. And if that could be remedied, I hope that council has some sensitivity to doing so in that. So those are my remarks. I hope you find them useful. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Corey Cost. Would anybody else like to address the hearing uh for a first time? For virtual participants, just raise your hand for the callers. If there's any additional callers who haven't spoken a first time, it's uh star nine to raise your hand and star six to unmute. Yes, I have an additional speaker in the house here.
Hello.
Welcome. When you're comfortable, you have five minutes to address the hearing. If you could start with your name.
Sounds good. Uh, Ed, I live in Premier Street. Um, first of all, I just want to say, social housing is not a terrible thing. Um, my family grew up in social housing in the UK. Um, there's a lot of good and bad things to it. But with this one, I'm concerned about the overdevelopment of our area. Um, there's fourteen thousand five hundred homes apparently going to be needed in the next ten to twelve years. Uh, under consideration right now, south of this proposed development, there is twenty percent of that under consideration, which is a huge percentage for one area. Of that, um, it seems that there's less than ten percent of those buildings under consideration going to be used for low income housing. Surely that can be addressed and help. Uh, you know, if you change that to twenty percent, you basically double the proposal that we have here. It's a very simple thing in my mind, and developers can help out when green space can be kept. Also, uh, also, I kind of find it odd how some of the people who phoned in work for housing charities. That's great, but that is kind of their job, like we're here. This cut.
Uh, I I think we just had a power fluctuation. It is a windstorm outside, but uh we'll confirm that uh I can still see our counselors moving. So we're still uh obviously online, so please carry on.
You know, I just find it odd that, you know, people can do their job when we're talking about our homes, right? I don't come here and say, well, we need more. I work in shipping. I don't come here and say, well, I need more port space because there's a, there's not enough export space, right? Like, it's my job. They can keep their job and they can talk to you guys when they talk to you, not in public time, I guess. That's my point. Um, also, the thing is these are multifamily homes, multifamily homes, according to this proposal, are not family homes. Family homes consist of one or more parent and one or more child. Why can't we have those? Right? Having a hundred and eighty units is is huge for such a small community. That's also having three thousand three hundred and ninety three additional units proposed just south of us. That's a huge amount of development in one area. Um, and that that is gonna, like, I understand people have looked at the traffic. And yes, right now, it's manageable. But when there are three thousand additional cars commuting, it's really gonna screw up the road. It's fine right now. Yes, it takes a little bit of time to get everywhere. And yes, when there's an issue on the bridge, it can add up massively. It once took me five hours to get from fifteenth and Lynnmore to Premier Street. That is a serious time delay. So I just want to say, social housing is fine. But can we please make it so it's not outrageous? You know, fifty townhouses for the families, because there's very few townhouses or three bedroom condos being built. They're all single bedroom and maybe a two bedroom and a two bedroom is like two million dollars. That's the crazy thing. We need bigger houses, not smaller ones. Um, yeah, uh, thank you very much. Oh, and also I'd like to say sorry from everybody here for Chancellor Hanson. Um, he uh attacked, I don't think anybody knows why.
Well, thank you very much for your comments, Ed. It, would anybody else like to address the hearing for a first time? Okay, so we, we've been receiving some, okay, there you go. Yeah, come on. And and I'll just start to describe what's going to happen next. Um, uh, we do also have a virtual participant as well that wants to speak. Once we've done those two speakers, um, members of the council have been submitting some clarifying questions through to staff while you've been commenting here. And so what we'll do is we'll take a bit of a pause at that point. Uh, it may line up very nicely with a bit of a leg stretch for just before nine o'clock, a bio break. People need to use the washrooms and such. And then we're gonna have the staff respond to the questions that have accumulated um so far from the counselors. These are questions of a clarifying nature. And so I'm gonna do the two speakers that are lined up right now. And then uh, we'll have a bit of a break, give staff an opportunity to prepare their responses. And then when we return, we'll hear their responses. So at this point, uh, welcome. When you're comfortable, you start, uh, you have five minutes to address the hearing. If you could start with your name.
Yeah, my name's Trent. Uh, I've lived on the North Shore my whole life. I've lived in the Lynnmore area now for three years. And I just want the council and the district in North Vancouver to be aware of the changes that have gone on in this area. Uh, back when the holiday in was the coach house, uh, there's probably sixty houses in that area on Orwell Street. Uh, where I live now on Orwell Street, there's thirty two units in my complex. There's another sixty across the street. The density of these areas has, you know, multiplied in a, in a great way. Uh, I kind of revitalized the area. But that being said, a lot of the old complexes have parking. They have two parking stalls in front of their duplex. Uh, where I live now, that's not so much, right? Like, the parking is restricted with the infrastructure changes to mountain highway uh exit and on ramp. It's been great, but it also took a lot of street parking away. So adding one hundred and eighty additional units, I'm very concerned about traffic getting in and out of the area. Uh, and I'll just echo the sentiment with other residents. Like, we need to, if they, I'm not opposed to social housing, but if you're putting uh an exit at the top of that hill, where if there is a accident on the bridge, people routinely U-turn there. Uh, when it snows or a tree falls, no one can get out of the area unless they cut back up premier and they go through private property and cut back through a complex. Um, so yeah, I would just like to see uh the data um thoroughly researched before commitment to a hundred and eighty units is made. Thank you.
Thank you very much. You seem too young to remember the coach house. Uh, thank you for your comments, Trent. Uh, I have a virtual participant named Eric wishing to speak. And Eric has been moved over as a panelist. Eric, you're muted in the system at the moment. If you can unmute and uh, we'll see if we can hear you. Still within Zoom. There we go.
Hey, um, can you hear me all right?
I can hear you clearly. Welcome. You have five minutes to address the hearing.
Hey, thank you, Mayor and Council for letting me uh speak how I feel. I've been a resident North Shore for close to sixty years and more than half of it have been on, in, living in the Premier Street area. We've gone through many changes here, some good, some bad. But the most recent was this new development on Premier Street. The delays that we are put through here, traffic delays. When they blocked the road, they had to come through our comp, private complexes. The same I'm concerned about is the new development that you're proposing. I've seen nothing on how vehicles are gonna get in and out. Right now, it's a challenge. I couldn't imagine putting even a hundred more cars on the road. And as the previous um panelists mentioned, the last time it snowed, nobody got out. They had to come up through, the only other way is through private property. And that congested our townhouse area with all the kids playing out in the snow and everything else. And I'm not against the affordable house. I just think this is the wrong spot for it. Anytime anything happens, a bridge, we cannot get out of our area. We have more cars as a previous, making U-turns and everything else. And it's been a nightmare due to some of its construction. I don't, I don't think we can handle more construction in this area because we don't know how the trucks are gonna get into this complex. What kind of delays will be for shutting down roads as just the only road in and out of here? I'd just like thought to make that my point across. Thank you very much, Mayor, Counselor, for hearing my opinions. Thank you.
I thank you for your comments, Eric. Okay, uh, council, we have a number of questions that have been submitted. Uh, what I would suggest is that we take a five minute uh leg stretch, uh, visit to the washroom if you need to. And then we'll resume the hearing at that point uh with responses from the council questions. So we're at recess. All right, ladies and gentlemen. Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to get going again. So if people could take their seats and if, uh, members of the council could take their seats and if you're participating virtually, it'd be great if you turned your cameras back on. Uh, we have a quorum of council back and so I will, uh, start. So through the course of the public hearing, councils permitted the opportunity to ask questions of a clarifying nature. They've been submitting them through to staff. I think we've got about six or seven now that staff can respond to. So I'm going to go to Ms. Tina Atva is going to sort of uh, direct the responses. So we'll head over to you.
Thank you very much, Mayor Little. Good evening, members of council and community members and other people who are joining today. Yes, we have approximately five questions and I will read each one out and then ask the, um, most appropriate staff person to respond. I'll start with the first one, and this is a transportation-related one. The question is, please elaborate on the internal road system, not Lilwet, given an artificial turf field that will be one of the largest programmed artificial turf fields in our inventory, all using the internal road system. And I'll turn that over to transportation.
Uh, thank you, Tina. Um, through your worship, uh, yeah, the Inter River ATF, uh, or artificial turf field. Um, there has been a comprehensive traffic and parking study done as part of that planning work. Access to the ATF will be through Inter River Park Road, uh, which intersects with Lilwet Road. And so that traffic will not route through the, the Lynnmore neighborhood. It's separate. There is a road connection from Premier as I'm sure most residents are aware of and, and staff and council. However, that's, there is a gate there, uh, and so that road is, is really intended for service vehicles and, uh, you know, emergency access when needed, but not a, not a publicly accessible connection.
Thank you. Is that?
Thank you very much. Your worship, question number two, also for transportation. Where are the comprehensive traffic planning on the whole area? Capilano, University, Darwin, Metro Vancouver, Lower Seymour Conservation, Inter River, Grass Fields, and the ATF, the artificial turf fields?
Great question. And so, yes, there has been obviously a lot of changes in the area with, you know, really since twenty eleven with the OCP. And more recently, you know, we had the, uh, the OCP Action Plan, uh, in twenty twenty-one, but going back to twenty eleven, with the adoption of the OCP, there's been quite a few studies that have been completed as part of that. Some of the more recent ones include, um, a Capilano University master planning exercise that, uh, Cap U is leading, uh, but district staff are involved and are participating in. Um, we've been working quite hard with our counterparts at our neighboring municipalities, uh, including, um, West Vancouver and the city of North Vancouver and Burnaby, as well as the, the First Nations, uh, on the North Shore, Squamish and Slaywithu, to advance rapid transit to the North Shore. And so we expect that the existing R2 Rapid Bus will be extended to Metro Town in the very near future. And, uh, planning work is underway, uh, with respect to essentially upgrading that to a faster, more rapid service, which may involve a higher level of technology, uh, including potentially Skytrain. Um, so that work is ongoing. We've been also working with the ministry on, uh, we completed an upper levels corridor review. So that's online and available. And I, I'm sure we can, we can circulate links to that. Uh, but that study was completed, about a year and a half ago and, and looked at a number of improvements that can be made along the upper levels. We also are very happy to see FIBS underway in, in terms of construction. Another one that's happening, uh, we're expecting it to initiate this fall is the review of the Second Narrows. So, you know, we've, staff have been very involved in the Lower Lynn Interchange, uh, project that is, is now complete. It's been completed for a couple of years, but we do recognize that, you know, there's challenges for sure in the, you know, the eastbound direction. Uh, we've got a pretty, pretty big constraint in terms of the existing ironworkers' bridge. Um, but we are working with, uh, Translink and, uh, the ministry, uh, at looking at essentially bridge replacement options. And so that work is really going to kick off this fall. And, you know, we've been generating some concepts and, and ideas around how we could potentially incorporate rapid transit into a future bridge. And so there's quite a bit of work that's happening in the background that may not be visible, but, you know, staff are aware of some of the, you know, challenges in the area. Um, we've also been working with Darwin on the, um, addition to reserve lands and we've been doing some of our own analysis on that work. We're, uh, planning to extend, actually, uh, Mayor and Council, um, approved in the five-year financial plan, the extension of the Spirit Trail to Deep Cove. And so it's a, essentially a twenty million dollar project where we're going to be extending Spirit Trail from, uh, essentially the Lynn Creek Maplewood area to all the way to, to, um, to Deep Cove. And so quite excited about that. That planning work is underway, uh, and again, working closely with Slaywithu on, on that project. Um, looking at improvements to Mount Seymour Parkway in terms of, uh, safety and, and active transportation. Um, and so there's a lot of work happening, um, uh, in the background and I think, you know, really comes together, um, in, in this area. Not to mention the, the, the Lynn Creek Town Center Planning Study. So there's been traffic impact studies associated with that, that entire town center that have been completed, um, with, with detailed traffic analysis and, and so forth. So a lot of that information is available online, um, and I can circulate links, uh, through our, uh, council liaison officer if, if there's interest in that.
Sorry, Mayor Little, that my question was not answered. That was my question. And so I'm, I'm talking about the comprehensive, um, traffic management plan that was asked for two terms ago on Inter River and Lilwet Road. Given we've got the Metro Vancouver Water District Lower Conservation, Lower Seymour Conservation Reserve, a development that was passed by council in regards to Darwin, another, um, a student housing project that was passed at Cap U. Uh, we've got an Inter River, Inter River Field, like, all of this is cumulative total. And we need to understand how the circulation, Mr. Carney, all the information he gave is, is critical, but I mean, we need to understand if that gate is going to be, you know, opened at any time for, for secondary circulation, like, there's some big questions here. And I don't see a document or any study coming forward to council um, about the cumulative totals and that comprehensive plan.
Thank you very much, Council Mary. I, I think, uh, unless you have something else to add, Mr. Carney, I, I think if we do not currently have uh, that kind of a report in the works, then I, I guess you probably couldn't comment on that tonight if it's not in the works. Sorry, Council Mary, I, I need to, to just mute for a sec so Mr. Carney can respond. Mr. Carney? Yeah, uh, thank you, um, Mayor Little. Um, I, I know through the, uh, Inter River planning, um, uh, the traffic and parking analysis was, was completed. Um, I know that's not comprehensive for the entire area, but it was specific to Inter River and the ATF. Um, and, and just to reiterate that, the Cap U is looking at a master planning exercise that we are participating in. And so, some work has been done, some is ongoing, and I'm sure more is, is needed. And so I think part of the, you know, part of the, the, the purpose of the public hearing is to understand the concerns and then we can tailor some of our work plan to, to better address those concerns. Uh, thank you very much. Again, it, the, the, while the public hearings focus is on what could potentially be on the site, there would still be a second process for, um, actually approving the building for, for the site. And in that, you could have further transportation studies, um, considered in that as well. Um, not just the ones that are participant, participating with Capilano University. Um, I think we might have skipped over a question there. I saw one, uh, just, just Counselor Ma said, uh, please also comment traffic impact on the future development of the existing fire training center. And so that is, uh, those comments, I think your comments were on, um, Indian, or sorry, uh, Inter River Road. Uh, but, but the fire training center access is off of the Keith. And so do we have any comment about, um, traffic demands due to us freeing up the fire training center?
Um, yes. Thank you, Mayor Little and the council members for providing the opportunity to respond to this question. Um, uh, the, a traffic impact study specific to, um, this, um, location will be received when we have the application and that will be looked at, um, when the application is in. And, um, currently we don't have that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that?
Thank you very much. There's a little bit more on the Saint Denis site coming up, uh, one question, um, from now, but the fourth question was, is please provide all comments from the public open house, not a staff summary. And I'll ask Tamson Guppy to answer that, please.
Thank you. Yes. Um, this is the package that was provided to council on Monday. It boasts, uh, um, a full copy and also a redacted copy. Uh, it's also in the public hearing binder. Um, and then in addition, and it includes, by the way, all of the comment sheets, all of the emails, um, and also a download from the, um, virtual public information meeting chat room. So everybody's comments were in there. And the only things that were redacted were pri- for privacy reasons in the public version, but the coun- council gets the unredacted copy. So they get every single thing you wrote. And oh, and also the post-it notes from the post, meaning those were typed up and added in. So everything's there. At least I, I really tried hard to make sure everything was there. Um, but in addition to that, over the weekend, we got more emails. Those went straight into the public hearing binder and were also circulated directly through the public input, um, circulation to Mayor and Council as well. So Mayor and Council should be, have been copied on everything. Um, we really do take your comments seriously and um, try to value them and make sure that they are kept as part of the public hearing record.
Very much. Uh, next question.
Thank you very much, Mayor Little. This question, given the presentation tonight by staff was broad in its information of social housing, did the public meeting at the Holiday Inn convey to residents that the Fire Hall on Saint Denis is also being considered for social housing? I will answer this. Uh, I'm Tina Atva. I'm the manager of community planning. It was, uh, the Saint Denis site, just for a little bit of background, was one of a, a couple of sites that council gave direction to staff to take out for public engagement in the spring of twenty twenty-two. Uh, we did that and we heard, um, a number of comments, including generally, uh, strong support from the public, from the community for having affordable housing on that site. And, uh, there were a couple of scenarios presented. This information is available on, on the district's website. The open house for the Lilwet Road West site, though, focused strictly on or primarily on the rezoning and OCP components for Lilwet West. There were some slides that did show other projects, uh, in, in the district as was seen on the presentation today. It is part of the, the strategy of increasing rental and affordable and social housing over time to, to look at sites, uh, as they become available so that we can focus our priority here, which is a priority stated in a, a number of council documents. So we really look to, uh, focus on, on sites that are more readily available to give us a better chance of funding success. The Saint Denis site, if and when it may go forward as a, as a redevelopment option, we'll go through its separate rezoning and OCP amendment process. Thank you.
So it was not brought up as, as an, as a, it was not brought up at that meeting?
Correct. That meeting was rather narrowly focused on the OCP and rezoning piece, but, uh, it has been in the public sphere already that, um, that the district has been, uh, reviewing that additional site, uh, on the other side of Lynnmore. Okay, uh, all right. So back, returning back to the public. Uh, so then the offer is, would anybody else like to address the hearing a first or second time? And that's also an offer for virtual attendees. Just again, raise your hand. And if you are participating by phone, it is star nine to raise your hand and star six to unmute. I think I saw a hand over here. Welcome. Yeah. Please.
All right.
Paul.
And I think it's important, uh, whole name because, uh, what's the concept of, uh, affordable housing or social housing? What kind of people is gonna be living there? I think it's a concern for me. Um, I don't know if it's a concern. I, I think it's a concern for all the residents in the little area. And the reason why, um, I'm here speaking for a second time and I asked Paul for his name is because he pointed out to a very particular situation. We don't know the people that are going to be living there. And he addressed that he's seen, you know, people are like with tendency of crime and violence. And maybe this is not the right forum for me to express this. But, um, my daughter is attending, um, Lynnmore Elementary School. She's, she's six years old. She was attacked last week by a classmate with a pencil. And that girl is coming from a family who's under social affordable housing program. So I think for me, it's important that these kind of programs are actually for people that are going to contribute in a positive way to the community. And we don't know that. We don't have insurances for that. We've seen, I've seen since I moved to Canada, in Vancouver, I was in Port Moody. And I've seen in these places where, uh, affordable housing is offered, that unfortunately, the people that are there are either taking advantage of that and are people that are not contributing in a positive way to the community. So, yeah, I think, yeah, the traffic, it's annoying. Uh, as I said, I live in Orwell. Once I was trying to drive my, uh, girl to gymnastics here in the rec center and I couldn't move because it was back up from an accident in the, in the, uh, bridge. So, yeah, I get it, like, traffic. Some people say, oh, that's not a concern, uh, affordable housing. But I think it's about the impact in this little residential community. It's a safety, it's, uh, there are many other factors, as I said before, that need to be considered before, uh, working on, uh, bringing more people to, you know, specific area. The location is a really bad spot, in my opinion. Um, especially because it's just one way in and out. But yeah, I think after hearing, uh, you know, different ideas and concerns, especially what Paul, uh, brought up. Yeah, I think my main concern will be what kind of people will be there? I don't want to point out, I don't want to, um, be, uh, critical about that, uh, or, uh, being a tendency that bad people are going to leave there. But I just suffered from that last week. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. And, you know, I have to be cautious about commenting on, on people's presentations, but I did just want to say that, um, in the presentation upfront, first and foremost, that, uh, this is not intended to be proposed for, uh, low barrier housing. Um, uh, but at the same time, I, you know, my kid got shoved off of a swing by a very rich kid. I mean, it, it, like, you, you can't, we, we can't corporately come to the conclusion that someone's socioeconomic status is going to by its nature. You know, my kid got shoved off of a swing by a very rich kid. I mean, it like you, you can't, we, we can't corporately come to the conclusion that someone's socioeconomic status is going to by its nature. Cause other issues. Having said that, it's not within the current proposal for it to be low barrier housing. This would be. Moderate income from very much working families largely. And but we do also have other proposals in other places in the district where we're contemplating. Low barrier housing because we need to also be providing that in other places. But that's not what this location is being contemplated for. Okay, so then would anybody else? I'm sorry, I have this person right here speaking a first time. Nope, you. The first time speaker in the second row, you're up there. You, nope. Please.
I am in the second row.
There you go.
My name is Kelly Malin, and I live on Lilawet Road. And I've lived in my townhouse. I have a townhouse in Linmore West VR 126 for 32 years. And I have been on the strata for 26 of those. And our complex is 13 buildings and 123 units. And we have an outdoor pool in the middle. And everyone has one parking spot. And one visitor's pass. So that is a rotating. Argument most of the time because everybody has a couple of cars most likely now. In my 32 years, 1991, I moved in, I have seen families. Three times, three cycles of families with children. First, second, and now a third. And this is certainly the most large. Set of families with multiple children, lots of babies. All have come in in the past three or four years. A few years ago, our property assessments went up quite a bit because 14 units, unannounced to me, because I don't know, just because I'm on the strata. 14 units sold between January and June that that year. It was a very busy year. And so we have a lot of new people that have arrived, but I could honestly say from everything, I just was at a budget meeting before I came here to learn how to better budget. A strata. For an hour. To that I know that people are struggling. So I could honestly say where I live now is affordable housing. You know, it has gone up over the little while, but we have a lot of young couples. With families and whatnot, and we have very good strata fees, I believe. We try and keep everything low. I just learned insurance is going to, we have to budget 18% for insurance next year. And 6% for all other services, landscaping, everything else. So we work very hard at a strata level to keep things affordable so that these young families. Can move in and raise their children and have a good life. So not only is this small spot here, you know, that's. Where the mice can go because the mice have all come up since C Lin was built. So we've got mice and critters and. Bears for the first time in 32 years. A bear has come now. So things are changing there. So. That little bit of grass area would be good for the little critters that that live over there. But I just wanted to point out that we are all in affordable housing in in C Lin and Linmore, and we're all trying the best that we can do. So whatever happens, whether it's zoned for more or maybe too much, I'd rather see it milder. But we're we're all part of a very important neighborhood that is part of this district and we love living where we live. And my back is right on Lilawet Road. I work from home. So my back bedroom, one of my back bedrooms is an office. And that is busy. It is full of trucks and the the water treatment and whatever that's going on there. And and there's no parking along there. There's three bus stops from Purcell. There then down at the end of our complex and then down at the end of the road. There's lots of bus stops and everything else, but it is a very busy, busy, busy street. So I just wanted to say I I appreciate everybody's comments and I do agree, but I'm very cautious. About bringing more people in, but we are all doing the best that we can.
Thank you very much. Saw a bunch of hands pop up there. So yes, come on. Yeah. And then up there. Yeah. Welcome.
Hello, my name is Kathleen and I'm really bad at this. I live in the Linmore area. I've lived there for 14 years, so I've seen a lot of change with all the developments that have gone on. I do agree with the previous speakers who spoke about development fatigue. But I'm not sure if that is the key issue here. You're looking at trying to find places to put social housing. And we've had people talk today about the value of social housing, and I don't think that that's a question here. This is not a question in my mind. Is social housing good or not? I think it's great. The question is, should this particular piece of property be rezoned? Not do we want more social housing? And if if this place does not get rezoned, where will it go and where's a more appropriate place to put it? So I live right on Old Lilawet. So on that road that comes down. When the snow falls, you can't get up that hill. You can't get down that hill. I walk all the time along Lynn Creek. They, I really see the change that climate change is having, the drying, the more drying in the summer is happening in the area. And I am seriously concerned about forest fires. If there is a forest fire there, how are we going to get the help in there to? To put it out? And how are we going to get the people out of that area? There was with only one egress route. How are we going to do that? That is a real concern. I I think about the trees around me all the time. And how am I going to get out? And I figured the best way for me to get out is by foot. I'm not going to be able to rely on a vehicle to get out. So because because the the roads get backed up all the time. And also too, when the snow falls, the cars slide down the hill. And having been there a long time, I used to be the only car trying to go up because I wanted to get to work. Now there's cars all the time going up and down. And so. And and to add to the people who talk about the U turns, the people who do those U turns. Are not calm when they do those U turns. They they are quite aggressive about how they do them. And it's matter of fact, it's quite. Nerve wracking when they do that. And you just hope that there isn't anybody walking, trying to walk across the street when they when they do those U turns. And pretty much that is all I wanted to say. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you very much. Back corner, please. Welcome. If you could start with your name, that would be appreciated.
Hi, my name is Mariam. I'm not good at public speaking, but I'll do what I can. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I have lived on in, you know, in the Lilawet area for 50 years. We were one of the first families to buy the townhomes there. And in the 50 years, I've seen so much change. We've gone through three generations. And I feel that. This area has probably is an area that has probably undergone the most changes in 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 the whole district. You know, when we when we talk about social housing, I am so for social housing. I don't, it doesn't, you know, I'm. And you know, social housing for me is very important. I just feel the location where you would like to put it is probably for me not. Not ideal elsewhere would be okay, but that particular location, I feel. One is suddenly you have homes that are. Two story, maybe three stories. And then you have on a hill. Home, you know, buildings that are six stories. It just, it's just overpowering. It just takes over the whole. Area. It takes away from from the nature, you know, as how it's it's been. I also feel that we are. You know, as a previous lady had mentioned, you know, I've gone through three generations. My children are the third generation in the area. And it is, I've noticed that. Today I have seen the most families, young families with young children. And with the number of cars, I don't find it when the children are crossing, there is no space for children. To bike ride, to walk safely. We have one park, Digger Park, which we had to fight so hard to keep. It took so long for us just to get a bench. I used to work for family services. Or for family programs up at Park Gate and and our job was to work with. Low income, at risk families in our neighborhood. And we fought so hard just to keep Digger Park. And we fought hard to get the bench. And we finally did. But I feel we've got so many more families that we need to first put services that will. That will help these families with young children. You know, you talk about having superstore. But I would not send my child to superstore. It is such a busy intersection and. And you do have cars that just speed through the lights who turn the corners. And then you have cars who. Think that they're, you know, will do U turns at the place that is probably the the safest place to do a U turn. And I just when I'm, my focus is more on the families that we have now. That by putting a building there. You're creating more families, more more, you know, it'll be busier, but it's not going to be any safer. It's going to provide more traffic. And I just feel that we need more things for the for the younger families. And. It was one of the things. And then, of course, you know, we're looking also at the traffic of the the turf, the. The new field that's supposed to come up. I live on Premier Street now. And I have been stuck so many times in traffic, just leaving Premier Street. And I have nowhere to go in the old, you know, before, at least when they before doing the new road, there was. An exit on the bottom of Premier Street, which was great because if there was anything, you could go in and out from there. But now that's blocked and now there's just one way to go. And by creating more, you know, units, 180 units, it's just going to provide more traffic. And just, I think, more chaos. And it would be nice for a few years not to have any construction in our neighborhood. It has been so busy, dust and everything. But thank you for your time.
Said you were nervous, but you spoke very well. Thank you very much. I've got a virtual participant and then I'll come to you. So I have Rowan speaking a second time.
Hi there. Thanks so much, Mayor and Council. I just wanted to chime in hopefully briefly. As a second time speaker to. Hopefully put a perspective against some of the negativity that I'm hearing. I think I'm really struggling. With so many voices from folks who have privilege and are able to say, I moved to this neighborhood 10, 15, 20 years ago, and I get to live in these beautiful townhomes, these beautiful assets in America. But no, I don't want anyone else to come into my neighborhood on a piece of land that is not a park. It's not being used. It's not accessible. It's blackberry bushes and some trees, which the district has already articulated are going to be protected to some extent. And and not welcoming in new voices and new people. Because we're in a crisis and I I appreciate that this neighborhood has undergone development. I had to leave my former home. I used to live on Orwell Street on the other side of the highway, which has been completely rezoned and redeveloped for high-rise apartments, and that's frustrating. And it's also completely necessary. And so I think I just wanted to to come back on to kind of reiterate how important and how dire the situation is for so many people out there. And that this particular project feels so incredibly important. To providing so many homes to so many people who need them and need them desperately. And it's not, yeah, it's it's already trying to make up for. Lost time in that regard. And so, yeah, I just, I just wanted to come back on and I thank you all so much for your time and and hard consideration. It's late. I know you guys have all had a really long day, so I'll keep it short. But thank you, Council, for all of your thoughts tonight and for all of the other speakers for spending your time. But I really hope that we can be a more inclusive and more thoughtful community and welcome in more new neighbors who really need a place to live.
Okay, thank you very much for your comments, Rowan Sylvester. Next, I've got Fred Castor and then Olivia Horl joining us virtually. So welcome.
Thank you for allowing me to speak for second time here. It's been very interesting to hear everybody in this public hearing. And I want to ask the council members, each of you to really reflect on this hearing because it's been very important for the neighborhood to come here and express. Their emotions and their thoughts about the the social housing and the neighborhood. One of the things very important for the city or normal for the District of Vancouver is. How do we see North Vancouver, north of the highway and south of the highway one? This is very important. And if you see Westview, Lonsdale, Mountain Highway, Seymour. North Vancouver is one thing above Highway one and another thing below Highway one. Now, a lot of things are great in southwest of Highway one close to neighborhood. To the Limorhood neighborhood. Now, I think we already feel that the neighborhood is already. Reach a target of density. There's a lot of young families, a lot of new babies, three months, one year, two years, three years, they're gonna be in the school in four, five years. Easily is going to increase in 25, 30%. So this place cannot manage more people. The traffic, everybody here about the traffic, and I'm going to repeat the same story. So I ask you each member of this council to think about this because the city and every. Member of the city is looking at what the District of Vancouver is going to do with that corner. And I don't know with the fire hall, but with that corner because the federal government invests 200, 300 million dollars in that. Highway. And we're talking about a place that is 100 meters from that intersection. So it's going to be a lot of question what we decide and what we do here moving forward as a evolving society. But this is progress and we have to see like we're reach a point here. Now, basically, we have to basically maybe step back and do more critical thinking about this situation because. This is a lot of people have their eyes on that corner. So I really appreciate if we can reflect on this one and maybe we'll see. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments, Fred Castor. I have virtual participant Olivia Horl.
Yep. Can you hear me there?
I can clearly welcome you have five minutes to address the hearing.
Thank you. Um, yeah, I just wanted to call. I've been listening the whole time and thank you so much. Yeah, you guys have had a very long day, so I appreciate. I'll try and keep it brief. I feel like I've just heard a lot of I support social housing, except or but. And in reality, if you don't accept it in your own neighborhood, even it's not the same thing. And if we, there's other places that we can build social housing, we should be building it. On them as well, as well as here. And I mean, I live in this neighborhood. I live right beside the site. I'm a renter. I believe. More renting and more rental renting is important. If I were to have to find a new rental now, I've been in my place for about four years. I think I'd have to leave the North Shore because nothing was within my budget. And I live with a partner. If I was single, I would definitely have to leave the North Shore. And there aren't places for people to live who don't have the luxury of being able to afford a large home or also didn't buy something 10, 15 years ago. When prices have not skyrocketed in our neighborhood, there's some talk about it being affordable. In our neighborhood right now, the main places available are one between 1 million and $2 million townhomes. So types. Housing like this is incredibly important. And I totally agree. There's a lot of things that need to be looked at with traffic. And I think those things can be dealt with and can be looked at. But the need to have more affordable housing, both here and other places in all areas where it can be built on the North Shore, especially district is incredibly important.
Thank you very much for your comments, Olivia Horl. Okay, do we have anybody else who would like to speak a first or second time? I see still, oh, no, that's the last participant. Okay, would anybody else like to speak a first, second, or? Okay, would anybody else like to speak a first, second, or third time? Okay, now, this is a quasi judicial setting. And so to actually formally exhaust the speaker's list, I'm going to do something that's going to sound a little bit repetitive, but it's just to be official. So I'm going to ask three times here, would anybody else like to address the public hearing? A second time. Would anybody else like to address the public hearing? Okay, as long as you're not repeating what you've said before, Fred, then you're welcome to come up and speak a third time.
Thank you for allowing me to say the third thing that I haven't, I believe, haven't said this. If you research the data of a highway in North America, and you see what kind of businesses are in a distance of 100, 200 meters from the main intersection highway. You will see interesting business of entertainment, sports, malls, different kind of thing. North Vancouver is a very interesting area, it's unique. You don't find this anywhere in the planet. And this is a very, this is where basically a rich person in the planet would like to have a most poor house in the neighborhood. This is how simply it works. So Nap, Limor, North Vancouver is a jewel, we have to treat it like a jewel, guys. Sorry, folks. But being said that, I would ask the council to do a recession data on highway transportation. If you see hours for landing, what kind of businesses is happening in proximity of the main intersectional highway, you're going to be surprised. Even you draw landy, and then you cross the border, you see a. Wellington, Seattle, Portland, everything is very interesting as how the cities develop. Create jobs, and everybody will be happy, and everybody basically can support their families. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I saw an additional hand over here, yes, for first time speaker.
Hi, I'll be quick. I'm Gail Roberts. I've lived in North Vancouver District and City for almost 40 years. When I first moved to the District of North Vancouver, my kids were really little, now they're in their 40s. They don't live in North Vancouver anymore, they can't afford it. Live on Vancouver Island and Burt and Beacon, whatnot. I first lived in Westland Terrace, and our lots are absolutely huge. Everybody has their own park, pretty much. Coming here to to Linmore, we have very small properties, little, little places. I live in in VR5. We have one covered spot, reserved parking. And there is limited visitor parking. People have friends come and whatever. Home care comes, they all park in the fire lanes. They're asked not to, but there's no parking. There's no parking to have your family come over, your friends to come over. It's ridiculous. So you've got this little spot here, where that little forest is. You're going to take that away. And. You can't say, oh, it might be one six-story building, might be two six-story buildings. Sure, there's going to be parking. No one's going to, the quality, I guess what I'm saying, is the quality of life is going to decline so much. We are not privileged now. We have never been privileged in Linmore. I know the difference between living in North Vancouver District in other areas as opposed to living in Linmore. We are not privileged. The people who are privileged may live in Delbrook or Westland Terrace, if that's what you want to call it, or Capilano. Built there, rezoned there, there's got to be other places. Linmore doesn't have to be the one to sacrifice all the time. There are other places that can be rezoned. Looking at that map that they showed, it's it's laughable when you, if you were to really look at that slide with all the different dots. Linmore is not the place where you want to do this. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Gail Roberts. Okay, and again, I've got to go back to that exhausting the speaker's list piece. So would anybody else like to address the public hearing? Please, come on up.
Hi there. My name is Oscar. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I was, I'm going to be very short. I would like to see a proposal of an alternative road of getting out consistently from Premier Street. I'm not going to repeat what everybody said. I know we all have the same concerns, I believe, and we all support the same causes. An alternative road to leave Premier into the highway, either east or west. And a second proposal of. The the housing being a little lower. Not 100 to 180, but maybe 50 to 60 or to 70. If it's possible to see a proposal would be great. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Oscar. Okay. Just want to clarify, have there been any additional questions that have come through to staff? No? Okay, so I'm going to go back to exhausting the speaker's list. Would anybody else like to address the hearing? Second time, would anybody else like to address the hearing? And for a third and final time, would anybody else like to address the hearing? Okay, hearing none, I'm going to ask Counselor Mury to make a motion. Got your hand up there.
Thank you, Mayor Little, I move that this hearing be closed and that this bylaw be returned to a regular council agenda.
I second that.
Seconded by Counselor Hanson. I'm prepared to call the question, all those in favor, contrary minded, the motion carries. So this item has now been closed, but let me just clarify some things. So when are we planning to bring this back to second and third reading for councils' arguments and discussion?
Thank you through your worship. The item is tentatively scheduled for November 6.
Okay, so we'll do our best to have it on the November 6 meeting. But you do have to watch the agendas leading up to November 6 to make sure it wasn't bumped by something more urgent emergent. But at this point, that is the plan to have it on the October, or sorry, November 6 regular meeting council. When a matter is closed, what that means is that the submissions up to this point is what council can make their decision based on. We're not allowed to receive additional new information at this time. And so we would appreciate your participation in that by not sending new comments and questions to the council. If you do have questions that are bugging you, we are welcome to check in with staff, and they'll do their best to respond to your questions that you may have. Thames and waving away over there. But the council itself has to make its decisions based on what's been presented up until this point. So at this point, I want to thank everybody for their participation today. I want to thank the staff for all the preparation and reports that you brought forward for our consideration. And I want to thank the council for their deliberations that they're going to have to go through over the next couple of weeks. Thank you all. Have a great evening. Good night.